Good evening, everyone. It is 7:31, March 24th, 2021. We have a big night ahead of us tonight. We are going to start with a special meeting that the board has called for tonight, and then we're going to go, we're going to go into a regular work session following this special meeting that was called. We're going to start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think we'll start with attendance.
Okay, trustee Fritsch.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Casada.
Present.
Mayor Levin.
Present.
We're moving to public comments on agenda items. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board on any of tonight's resolution? Just as a reminder, everybody has a one four-minute opportunity to address the board when speaking, and Jamie will be keeping the time.
I just want to add to that, please. We have two resolutions tonight. So if you are a member of the public and you want to make comments on either the first resolution, Resolution A, which is Adoption Plan Pursuant to Executive Order 203, New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative, or you would like to comment on the second piece, sorry, on the second one, which is, I just want to get it right, B, authorizing the issuance of a request or proposal for the furnishings of eighty native species trees to the Village of Austin pursuant to the Urban Forestry Grant. If you would like to comment on either, as was just said, each person gets one four-minute opportunity to talk. There will be a timer. We do this out of a sense of equity to all. We find this is a listening time for the board to hear the public. It isn't a Q and A or a back and forth. And it is, you don't have to speak the whole four minutes, but as we get to close to four minutes, you'll be told that four minutes are up. And you get to go once. We find that we would like to have everybody have the opportunity to speak in the same amount of time so that there's some equity in how people bring forth their commentary. If you have any questions about that, you could ask during the four minutes that you have, and we will get started. Martha? Do you see anybody?
So if anyone would like to comment, if you can raise your hand, then we'll see it, and then we can bring you over.
The little blue or green hands or whatever you have. I'm stalling a little bit because on my screen, I don't see any hands.
I don't either.
Okay, then. Please, Martha?
Okay. One second. Adoption of plan pursuant to Executive Order 203, New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. Whereas on June 12th, 2020, Governor Andrew M. Cuomo issued Executive Order 203, New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. And whereas the executive order states in part, beginning on May 25th, 2020, following the police-involved death of George Floyd in Minnesota, protests have taken place daily throughout the nation and in communities across New York State in response to police-involved deaths and racially biased law enforcement to demand change, action, and accountability. And there is a long and painful history in New York State of discrimination and mistreatment of Black and African-American citizens dating back to the arrival of the first enslaved Africans in America. And this recent history includes a number of incidents involving the police that have resulted in the deaths of unarmed civilians, predominantly Black and African-American men, that have undermined the public's confidence and trust in our system of law enforcement and criminal justice, and such condition is ongoing and urgently needs to be rectified. And whereas, the executive order directed each local government entity with a police agency, including the Village of Austin, to perform a comprehensive review of current police form deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices, and develop a plan to improve such deployment strategies, policies, procedures, and practices for the purpose of addressing the particular needs of the community served by such police agency and promote community engagement to foster trust, fairness, and legitimacy, and to address any racial bias and disproportion of policing of communities of color. And whereas, the executive order directed the chief executive of such local government to convene the head of the local police agency and stakeholders in the community to develop such plan, consult with stakeholders, including but not limited to membership and leadership of the local police force, members of the community, with emphasis in areas with high numbers of police and community interactions, interested nonprofit and faith-based community groups, the local office of the district attorney, the local public defender, and local elected officials, and create a plan to adopt and implement the recommendations resulting from its review and consultation, including any modifications, modernizations, and innovations to its policing deployments, strategies, policies, procedures, and practices, catered to the specific needs of the community and general promotion of improved police agency and community relationships based on trust, fairness, accountability, and transparency, and would work to reduce any racial disparities and policing. And whereas, the plan is to be offered for public comment, and after consideration of such comments shall be presented to the local legislative body in such political subdivision, which shall rectify or adopt such plan by local law or resolution as appropriate, no later than April 1st, 2021. And whereas, the Board of Trustees appointed community members representing stakeholders along with elected officials and others to be to the working committee to develop the plan to be presented to the Board of Trustees. And whereas, in October 2020, the village entered into an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group, Matrix, for Matrix to access and facilitate it, which work included initial meetings with elected and appointed officials, meetings with members of the village's civilian police complaint review board, meeting with individual stakeholders, conducting general outreach to the community, including conducting sessions in Spanish, undertaking a community survey in meetings with the working committee and its subcommittees dealing with the governance and oversight, internal operations and practices, policies and procedures, and hiring and training. And whereas, in January 2021, the first draft of the plan was made available to the Board of Trustees and the public, which plan was subsequently revised following comments from members of the working committee and from the public as a result of the public engagement session. And whereas, the Board of Trustees received the revisions of the plan based upon the aforementioned comments on March 5th, 2021, and March 16th, 2021, which revisions were discussed by the Board of Trustees at the March 10th, 2021 work session and March 17th, 2021 regular meeting. And whereas, the Board of Trustees extended its thanks to the members of the working committee who devoted countless hours of time to develop the plan, which the board now must consider and approve or transmittal to the Department of the Budget in accordance with Executive Order 203. And whereas, the Board of Trustees also extended its thanks to the many residents of Austin who participated in the public meetings, public survey, listening sessions, and board meetings, providing their opinions about police services in Austin and recommendations for future action. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Village of Austin Board of Trustees hereby adopts the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative Plan Annexed to as Exhibit A, and be further resolved, that the mayor shall sign the plan certification form Annexed to as Exhibit B, and the plan and the form shall be submitted to the Director of New York State Division of the Budget on or before April 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Again?
Comments from the board?
I can kick it off, Mayor. I really appreciate the hard work that has gone into this document. This week, I think, has highlighted the fact that violence against specific groups, in this case, Americans and others of Asian descent, is something that is happening. But this is part of a larger issue that we're seeing with race-motivated violence. And unfortunately, one of the things that this particular effort is meant to address is the fact that there is a pattern in this country of police violence toward people of color, Black people specifically. And what are the ways in which we can prevent those issues from happening? What are the ways in which we can address those issues once they happen? That, of course, because of the intersectionality of a lot of this work, it doesn't exist in a space by itself. The process of understanding what are the ways in which we can improve our police department showed us other areas where there was also areas of improvement that were needed. Because a lot of this work doesn't just happen on the backend once something horrific has happened, but also on the frontend with how you can avoid things like this. And the process of putting together this report, we learned a lot from the community, from our police department, from our chief, from members of the working committee, about the really nuanced picture that we have in front of us. We are living in a country where police violence and use of force issues are something that is all too regular. At the same time, we live in a village where it is not everyday occurrence. We live in a country where there is a disproportionate makeup of the police with compared to the folks that live in the community. In Austin, we see an effort going back before 2020 to change that. And so forth and so on, where you have a localization of national issues, some of which are really relevant, some of which are not as much. And yet, this being one of the real first efforts coming out of a lot of the horror of 2020 to address some of the systematic issues that we're seeing. And so a lot of it comes down to what happens after the rallies, what happens after the marches, what happens after the moment that there's a lot of attention on these issues. And it's with plans like these that we can say, this is not a one-time deal for us. We take the concerns of the community seriously, and we also appreciate our police. And for us to be able to have those two ideas hand in hand, that Black Lives Matter, and that we appreciate the effort of our police department, that we appreciate them and the work that they do. How do you navigate a conversation like that in a way that isn't going to divide and isn't going to come off as tone deaf either? That's some of the work that we had in front of us. And so I'm really proud of the work, starting with a former mayor, Garrity, and going all the way to our current mayor, all the members of the working committee, the members of the community, both on the committee and not, that have been really engaged with this effort. I really appreciate it. I think that it shows. Certainly, if you compare it to many other municipalities, it shows. But we're in a place where there is more work to be done, and I'm excited to get to work. So thank you all for the effort here, and let's move forward.
Thank you, trustee Lopez. Comments? Anybody else on the board? I'm not seeing anyone, but oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Trustee Casada?
A few words. I want to echo what trustee Lopez just mentioned. This is actually is a community work for our community. A lot of the work that was done reflects the needs of our community and reflects the needs that were done as part of the requests from our government. So I want to thank everybody that worked really, really hard for this. So thank you for all the hard work. Like I said previously and on other occasions, this is just the beginning of a long road, not just for this portion, but I think for us as well, and see what are the next steps are. Obviously, there's a lot of variables that have to happen. We have to hear back from our governor. There's a lot of coordination that needs to happen between the county level and villages and towns around Westchester County and around New York. But I'm happy to see that how much people were involved and the hard work that was done for this. So thank you for all that stuff.
Thank you, trustee Casada. Anyone else? We don't all have to say something, but just reaching out there. I'm sorry.
I have a question for Stuart. So Stuart, the resolution links to the March 19th version of the plan, and there were some changes that were made between that version, and I sent over a version today. All of the changes reflect the conversations that we have had. There's no additions or subtractions that we haven't discussed publicly, but I wanted to note that because it is different from the version that is linked in the resolution.
That's fine. And the, let's call it the March 24th version is the one that will be up on the website as the final version, and that is what will accompany the certification form and certified resolution to the state budget office.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Thank you, trustee Lopez. I'm just checking off all of my questions, one after the other, because they're all being covered. Anyone else comment? Seeing no one? We're good? Dana, we're good? Okay, so let me, a lot has already been said. I want to say a few things. Number one, the committee that was put together last year had a very large job. I don't know if they knew that going in, because I don't think that we knew that going in. A mandate comes from the governor. It doesn't happen very often, and we haven't done this before in any material way as a community. So we all started at the same place, which is a place of unknown. How to put it together? We all do the best we can, and it's never actually perfect. It's never exactly the right number, or exactly the right people, or too many people, or too few. And the list goes on and on. The important piece for me is that as the process continued, with all its flaws and all its learnings and all its positives that came out of it, some of which are already being implemented, the end result, from my perspective, is something people should be proud of. Whether people are proud or not, I think some people have stated they would be prouder of something else, and I'd like to own all of that. In other words, we're going to be pretty transparent that this was difficult for a lot of people. It brings out a lot of emotions. It brought out a lot of feelings for people, not necessarily what they go through in Austin, but what they go through in other parts of the country as they travel, what they go through as kids, what their families go through, what their neighbors go through. It brought a lot of emotions into the game and into the process. And that actually was probably part of the intention of the mandate, and that's why I think the mandate also had a very aggressive but very specific timeline. Because these are issues that could be discussed, frankly, forever. Or you put six months to nine months stake in the ground, and you do the best you can with as many people from a community that can represent that community. Secondly, I think if I were to hire consultants again to do this, and I've gotten a lot of feedback, pros and cons about the consultants themselves and about the process of hiring consultants, I would do it again. I spoke to Mayor Bramson of New Rochelle, which is a much bigger environment, also highly diverse, with many, many issues. And I think that many municipalities would actually hire consultants, because what it allowed us to do, it allowed people to take this journey and wherever they wanted. That may not have been the most pleasant way to go, but it allowed people without the local elected officials to be in the room in any way in the majority, and it allowed people to take that journey where they want. In communities where there are lots of people of color, in communities where there are no people of color, in communities where there is a big Asian community, and a community like Buffalo that is urban, where the population triples during the school year because of the universities that are there, communities that are close to the Canadian border, where their police issues are about human trafficking and gun trafficking and animal trafficking, apparently, from one of my colleagues up there. Their entire journey was quite different than our journey here, and the journey in Brooklyn is going to be different than the journey in Austin. It's part of a youth city. It's a whole different game. So for me, this village took on the journey that made sense at this point in time in our history with the people that live here and the people that should talk about what policing should look like for the next few years. And from my perspective, when I looked at it and I looked at neighboring municipalities, I think they did a yeoman's job of, and a really great job. There are some things that came out of it that we can look at and do very quickly. There are some things that are going to be multi-year, and there are some things that we may not, or at least we don't believe, that can be done in our village alone. And that became part of, a large part of the conversation, because you boil it down to opinions that people have. They're not necessarily based on facts. They're based on some opinions. So for me, the process could have been bumpy. Maybe some people feel should have been less bumpy, and other people feel comfortable with that, but for me, the end result has been pretty impressive. The working committee, all the people that filled out the surveys, all the people that were involved in the listening groups, the people that contacted us and said, I want to talk to you. I want to explain something to you. And all of my colleagues on the board, who have done really hundreds of hours of work, and I think in a way that we would do it all over again. I would anyway, but I think all my colleagues would. Now we're at a place of saying we will likely ratify this. I can't speak to everybody. We need to take the vote, so it's not my place to speak on behalf of the entire group. Trustee Lopez, I've said this before, a special shout-out, because he is the longest-standing trustee. He, also for Dana White, who has helped so much with really putting it together and putting documents. The village staff that came in later in the picture, they were not involved in the beginning. And the consultants, who tried to take something that hasn't really been done before, so there is not a whole heck of a lot of guidance, frankly, on how each municipality should do it, because we're all so different. I am looking forward to seeing the rest of the plans. That will also give this board some guidance as to ideas that others have done. And I'm looking forward to the next steps that we take in executing this plan over the next year, or two years, or three years, depending on the pieces, on the parts of the plan that we're interested in doing. And I appreciate everybody's comments on this. So we are ready to vote. And I'm going to give one more shout-out to any of the trustees who feel they want to add something. I otherwise think that we're ready to vote. So Martha?
Sure. Stuart, would you like this to be a roll-call vote or just regular voting?
Regular vote is just fine, Martha. Thank you.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for the furnishing of eighty native species trees to the Village of Austin pursuant to the Urban Forestry Grant. Whereas, on December 1st, 2020, the Village of Austin was awarded funding by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for an urban and community forest project in the amount of $38,000, which amount will be repaid to the village by the Department of Environmental Conservation. And whereas, as part of the grant process, the village is to issue a request for proposals for the furnishing of eighty native species trees in Nelson Park and Nelson Sitting Park. Now therefore be it resolved, that the village manager is authorized to issue a request for proposals for the furnishing of eighty native species trees pursuant to the Urban Forestry Grant awarded to the village. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Again?
Comments? My only comment is yay. Thank you, staff, and trees are a great thing to have in every community in the world. They serve lots of purposes. I won't get into all the details. Could Google it all, but there's only good things about trees for every community. So I thank the staff for doing the work to get us more trees and not have it all come out of our pockets.
We're incredibly, we're anticipating that we're going to have some extras, actually. So out of these eighties, after working with Save a Tree, who's our consulting arborist, they feel that we might have some to sprinkle throughout the rest of the village with this eighty. We're very excited to get to work, and hopefully this RFP will be going out next week.
Great. Thank you. Martha?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then can I have a motion to adjourn to the work session?
Before we do that, so I'm looking at the attendees. I want people to understand, in the beginning of the meeting, I framed for everyone who was on exactly how this special meeting was called and how it works, and asked for comments on either of the legislations in front of us, because we called a special meeting specifically to ratify this resolution, and then another one was added. The one about the trees was simply added because it was available. There were six attendees at that time. We did start on time. We went through it, and I see now there are ten. So we've already passed the resolution, and we have the comment period. But I wanted to let folks know, in case they're wondering, when do they get to speak? The truth is, we announced in the beginning, we waited a few minutes. We stalled as much as we could. We were not getting any hands up for comments or questions. And we moved on. And I hope, I just want to make sure that we're now going to go into the regular work session. Go ahead, Martha.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn to the work session?
So move.
Second.
Comments? Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. It's a big moment. It's something that has, we've been working on for months, and I want to congratulate the board and everybody involved, people listening in, people that will see this as a recording, for all the work. We will, the working committee, which included the police, the members of the police, and members of the CPRB, and members of the community, and members of faith, and trustee, and a mayor. I think I've captured the group, and we are going now to continue on this Zoom link, but we are moving now into the next session.
Thank you, Martha.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just, there was a Q and A. I don't know if you would like to, it's a simple answer. It's from Virginia Stillman. Where can we see the final version? March 24th version, and she's saying there's no link on the village website to this version, so I don't know if...
Yeah, that was also discussed. Stuart, you want to repeat it?
It will be, trustee Fritsch, it will be, I will get it over to Jamie Hoffman, and it will go up. Actually, I'll turn it, I'll convert it into a PDF, and then it will, then it will go onto the website. Probably first thing tomorrow morning is my expectation. It will be there. Then we will, the mayor will sign the certification form, and it will go off to the state budget office.
All right, thank you, Stuart. Virginia, hopefully that answered your question.
There's two of them, is that?
That was both from her.
Oh, I see. Virginia has someone who would like to answer this question live. Omar, did you want to answer that live?
I'm just noting that we did answer it live.
Okay. Yeah.
I just reread it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Stillman. I appreciate that. We got to remind the public that it will be posted. Okay, I think we're good now in the next session. So announcements from members of the board, because we already did the pledge.
I can, I can start the week off. We had a very sad moment in the fire service yesterday in Spring Valley. We lost a firefighter at a very bad fire over there, and they the fire came in at four o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, and they really didn't have a chance. They rescued quite a few people. They lost, I believe, two residents and the firefighter. He was on the third floor, was going back in to make a rescue, and the building collapsed. So rescue efforts went on through the day and through the night, and they found him this morning and removed him from the scene. So it's just, you know, and Rockland County is 100% volunteer. So just a peace of mind of what these guys do, what we do. It can be serious. We're lucky 99.9% of the time, but you know, unfortunately, this happened, and it just puts a little gut check in everybody that, you know, what really goes on out there. So just keep Spring Valley in your prayers, and they're going through a tough time right now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fritsch. Comments from anyone else on the board? I'm not seeing anyone. I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, we're coming on I think some better times as the pandemic, as more people are vaccinated, and I just want to put it out there that the numbers are still pretty high. They're coming down, good trend. So I encourage everyone that can get vaccinated to please get vaccinated so that we bring all the numbers down. It doesn't help us if only a few people are vaccinated. All that happens is that viruses just learn to All that happens is that viruses just learn to, um, to regenerate themselves in different forms and we're gonna be back where we are. So I am very hopeful that anybody listening to this, um, uh, can please get themselves vaccinated. There's a group in Austin, shout out to them, uh, called, um, well, they're called COVID angels or they're called Austin angels. You know, I, uh, I've heard different names for them. It's, it's a volunteer group that just sort of, like a lot of stuff that happens in this wonderful community, just put themselves out there. And they actually are helping people, um, who may be having difficulty. They may not have technology. They may not know how to go about doing things. Um, for whatever reason, um, they're making phone calls on their behalf to local pharmacies, to doctors, to whatever, and helping them connect with vaccines. You know, anybody that works in not-for-profit, anybody now that works in school systems, people, I wanna say it's over sixty, but I just read that it might actually have been lowered again to a different number.
Fifty and under mayor.
Fifty, fifty and over. So the number, so, okay, that, that's gonna be a lot of people in our community. We actually have, um, a lot of people over fifty in this community. I'm begging everyone to please get themselves vaccinated, not just for your sake, but for the sake of the community. That would be helpful. If you need help, you can absolutely call, uh, this group. Um, they have a Facebook account. You can also call the village manager's office because they actually do have a lot of information about vaccinations in the area, um, throughout Westchester County that maybe have helped you, a relative, a family member, et cetera. Um, I had the pleasure this past weekend, uh, with so much death going on that is, you know, go, becoming a mayor in the middle of a pandemic is, um, sort of something that I can't Google. Like there are no instructions for what you do when you become mayor, um, in the middle of a pandemic and, and how to do the right things and, and what you're supposed to do. But there seems to be a lot of death and it's been really upsetting and depressing to all of us. But not this weekend. This weekend I got to celebrate somebody's hundredth birthday with him. Um, a veteran, a community member, a person who at the age of eighty, got a GED from our very own, uh, Austin High School. Um, he's sort of amazing. Uh, Tigers fan, you know, the community came out. Neighbors, family traveled from Pennsylvania and I believe Wyoming. They sat in their car and they drove the whole way. They didn't stop. It, it was, it was joyful. Um, his wife, um, died at a hundred and one, actually, a hundred and two. I was, um, and was also a long time Austin mayor. She died a few years ago. Um, it was, I, I'm so appreciative of a community that takes the time to really come out. The police came out, OVA came out, um, Dana Levinburg came out. I was there. Um, it's pure joy. So this is like great stuff. I want anybody that turns a hundred, uh, let the village manager know I will be on your front lawn celebrating with balloons and everything else that you want. And we'll make sure that you get a beautiful proclamation because I wanna celebrate life, uh, for the rest of the year. That's, that's something that would be very joyful. I am, um, also, this is the, uh, March is Women's Month. Um, part of what trustee Lopez talked about with, um, the increase, um, in hate crimes, we've sent a lot of information about what Westchester County is doing with new information. Bless you, Maddie, with new information and, um, everything else. I, I don't wanna repeat it again, but the local police is always there, um, to help you. They're always available twenty-four hours a day. Um, please call them if you witness a hate crime or if you are a victim of a hate crime. Uh, Westchester County has also set up, um, phone numbers, the DA's office. We, we've sent it on the mayor's note. We've sent it out, uh, many places. Please use it. I bring up the fact that it's not just minority groups. It isn't, um, uh, just, um, different ethnic groups. Um, it is also women. Women, um, in this pandemic, from an unemployment point of view, have suffered the most. It is, the statistics are staggering of how many women, um, really a generation of women have been set back because they have had to, um, give up careers, jobs and a whole bunch of other things in order to take care of children. Um, they're oftentimes in the jobs that were, um, lost first. Um, and it really sets back an entire generation of women at all ages. Um, it also socioeconomic, uh, across all segments of our society. Um, it isn't something that's been discussed enough and we're sort of leaving March, which is, uh, Women's Month. But, um, it is out there. Um, domestic violence has increased. Um, lots of really the worst things that happen in our society, um, unfortunately are happening now. The pandemic is part of that, but there's also, um, a lot of hate crimes on the rise. And so I just wanna make note of that, that there is help out there and local, um, representatives and local police are, is one of the two places that I would strongly recommend that you seek out when you need, um, such help. I would also, um, like to say that I am very proud. Again, we said at the last session of ratifying, uh, the police, um, reform and collaborative, um, initiative. And, um, in the next week or two, we will take the next step and make some announcements of what our next steps will be in initiating the plan. So I wanted to be very clear about that. We are ready. We have a lot of legislation to pass tonight, so we will get going on that.
Madam Mayor, one quick announcement if I can.
Please.
Um, so there is, uh, an alternate position available on the civilian police complaint review board. And, uh, the chair of the civilian police complaint review board, um, and I are going to be getting together. She's actually, um, uh, in the meeting today. Hello, Jennifer. Jennifer Cabrera and I are getting together, uh, and doing a Facebook Live on Monday night, uh, at seven thirty in order to answer questions, uh, from the community about, uh, becoming an alternate on the CPC RB. Uh, so you'll see some more information going out about that, but wanted to let folks know that that was happening.
I appreciate you, Mitch. I didn't know you were doing that, but I appreciate you bringing that to the foreground. I would like to say that this board has taken a little bit of a different format in, um, appointing, uh, people to the boards. Most of the boards, not all. Some are appointed by the manager, but almost all are appointed by the mayor. Um, it used to be, um, and there's no right or wrong way here. It used to be the mayor, um, appointed everybody and interviewed everybody. Uh, for me, that, that's not, in my opinion, um, going forward, the best way to do it. We wanna include more of the chairs of committees. Here's a great example. And, uh, we do have applications from the end of last year, which we are going through and getting to with a liaison from each committee. Um, and then, uh, um, you know, either I or, um, a chair will also sit in those. They're taking a little form, uh, a different form, and then we will have recommendations for appointments. I would also, uh, say that there's more information now on the website, but I would also say that going forward, we're going to make some announcement that we actually are gonna shift and include the chairs of committees a little bit more in the interviewing process. We have not done that in the past. By we, I mean past boards. And so we're gonna do a little bit of a shift, um, in the next probably couple of months and work through that. So just an FYI to sort of, for those of you that are tuned in to how government works, um, that's a bit of a shift that we're gonna take. So I appreciate, um, Omar Lopez bringing that to the foreground because this is one of the first changes, um, that we're doing. And I think it's great. So thank you for that. Okay. We are ready to vote and discuss lots of LLs, twos, fours, three and everything after that.
Evening, everybody. Thank you. Um, yes, we do have, uh, a lot of legislation to discuss tonight. Uh, so first off, we'll, we'll kick off with, um, local law two, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is a waiver of residency requirements for the director of code enforcement, uh, for the building inspector and assistant building inspector positions. Um, this is a requirement, um, that, um, the, uh, Westchester Human Resources has asked, uh, to make sure that we accommodate. So, um, with that, I will turn it over to, um, Corporation Council.
Uh, thank you, Karen. What could be better? The lawyer talking about laws. My goodness. Uh, folks, this local law, uh, came about, uh, the code enforcement officers like the building inspector and assistant building inspector are actually considered public officials. Uh, pursuant to a public officers law, section three, public officials, unless otherwise exempted, must reside in the municipality where they work. Uh, as, as Karen mentioned, our current law, which is chapter thirty-two of the village code, uh, specifically exempts from the requirement I just mentioned to you, the position of director of code enforcement, which we don't currently have filled, building inspector and assistant building inspector. What recently came up, because we're in the process of looking for an assistant building inspector, is that we got a request from the county to provide us with a copy of the legislation which exempts that position. But realizing that the village may also wanna fill code enforcement officer positions, we thought it prudent to amend the, uh, amend chapter thirty-two, uh, section seven, uh, and section eight to explicitly include code enforcement officers in the, uh, residency waiver. That would allow code enforcement officers obviously to live in Westchester, to live in the village of Austin, but also to live in any contiguous county, uh, within New York State and also to live within Duchess or in Orange Counties. Uh, and, uh, this would then, uh, be an exception to the, uh, local law. Uh, if you look at public officers law number three, you will see that the law goes on for about nine pages. Because what other municipalities have done, they've actually gotten special legislation passed up in Albany to explicitly exempt particular positions. But instead of doing that, the village under its home rule authority can actually do it pursuant, uh, to its own local law, which is probably a far easier, uh, lift to do. Uh, but, uh, this, uh, this amendment would simply, uh, allow the addition of code enforcement officers to those who are subjected to the, uh, the waiver of the residency requirement. Uh, and to avoid any, uh, issue, should we want to hire code enforcement officers who don't live within the village, uh, this would then, uh, uh, resolve that, that issue. Uh, and we would provide this legislation to the county so that they would be aware that, uh, the person being hired need not live within the village of Austin. And, uh, any questions if anyone has?
Stuart, will this make it easier to fill those positions?
Much.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
They would require that for.
Uh.
They live in the village. That seems.
You know, trustee White, I, I can just point out and I, I don't have the answer. We have two code enforcement officers now and county hasn't asked a question, but I wanna, I wanna sort of preclude the question from being asked. So this way we basically put it in the books. But the code enforcement officer, as a public official, is technically supposed to, you know, reside within the village. The county raises the question, this will basically resolve that issue.
Makes sense.
So. Go ahead. I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
We, refresh my memory because I know we went through this several years back. I'm not sure if you were involved on that one, but we already changed, I believe, the code enforcement, director of code enforcement or the building inspector's positions for that matter. Um, couple of years back because we were encountering the same situation, I believe. Um, actually, you know what? That was not the case. I apologize. It was actually the village manager, uh, position that we changed that it was, uh, restricted to, to be a, a village resident. We wanted to expand that, that option and now, so I apologize for that. But yes, no, I, I agree. Um, this should be changed, um, to open a bigger, not like we were, we've been, anyway. But yes, I, I agree with this, uh, change and modification or update to our codes.
Trustee Kazada, we actually did also for Corporation Council.
Yes.
Said live within the village and I, I thought it was finished to allow them.
Yes, we did. We did that, yes.
Otherwise, my wife would have been in for a bit of a shock. But, uh, I'm hoping if anyone else, but that, that, that would basically just, you know, resolve the situation here.
Now, Stuart, let me ask you this. Since that we were talking about code enforcements and things of the nature, maybe Karen or Maddie can help me out with this. I know there is a Spanish list for code enforcement. Is this something, and I know even though we don't have, does, do we have to have, uh, a Spanish code enforcement list on our books? So we can hire people from that list, if that will be the case? Or, or that doesn't matter? Cause I know when, when we are hiring people, um, we, we have a list. We, the, the, the county provides us with a list.
Right.
Is if we were to ask for Spanish list for code enforcements, will that be incorporated with the list of a regular code enforcement as well?
Maddie, I'm gonna defer that because I have to be honest. I, um, I believe that we are able to work off the list, but I don't think we have to have a specific position. But I wanna just confirm with you.
Yeah, I'm gonna look it up quickly. I was not aware that there is a separate and distinct exam that you can take as a code enforcement officer in Spanish. Um, if that is the case and if the list does exist.
I, I can send you the link.
No, I'm, I'm looking now. I, I, I trust you. Um, we certainly could pull that list. You're not, um, obligated to only pull lists that you have before. So if in fact such a list, uh, exists at present, we would be able to pull that list.
So, so my question is, so since that we are passing this resolution to clarify the residency or modify the residency requirement, since that, I, I don't, I don't want, the reason why I'm saying is I wanna make sure that the county says, well, you don't have a Spanish code enforcement under your, your bylaws.
Right.
Does that mean that we won't be able to get the list?
I would guess not because materially the, the job and requirements of that job are precisely the same, but one speaks Spanish and, and one is not required to. So I mean, I, I would defer to Stuart, but I don't think they could ever make that argument.
I won't say they could never make the argument because we've gotten some interesting arguments from the Department of Human Resources.
Fair, fair.
However, uh, and I will check into it myself, but trustee Kazada, an easy fix to the draft here is if we had to, we could technically add, including, you know, Spanish speaking, you know, the position of Spanish speaking code enforcement officer. That way we cover both bases.
That, that'd be helpful.
That, that can, that can be done. So if it's necessary, we can, that, that can certainly be done, you know, in a, in, in a draft when it's, when, when it comes before the board.
That, that'll be helpful for me. If you guys can, can confirm, if we don't have to do it, then that's great. But I would like to have, again, because we have dealt with the county and I wanna make sure that future boards or future administration doesn't get caught up on, on the technicalities. If we can get confirmation and writing from the county, uh, so we can have that in our records, that'll be very helpful. If we don't have to, my request to the board, my request to staff and Stuart will be, if, if we have to add it, I would like to add that portion to this language now. Uh, so we can have a, a bigger pool to pull different names to it. No, so.
Understood. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, what I would propose is to present a resolution to the board on April the seventh, calling for a public hearing on April the twenty-first with regard to proposed local law two of twenty twenty-one. And by that time I will certainly have the, uh, information for trustee Kazada in the event that, that additional language has to be put in.
Sounds like a plan.
Good.
Village manager?
Yes. Next is, uh, local law for twenty twenty-one, and this is involving towing and towing policy. Um, and this is Stuart Kahane and, and Chief Sylvester.
Uh, thank you and hi, chief. Uh, folks, this, uh, this is, this local law includes an earlier version that we had dealt with dealing with, uh, impounding vehicles. But a lot of this local law, and I thank the chief for this, and he can please chime in, uh, is based, uh, in large part upon the peak skill ordinance, uh, which has a, has a number of things here. This essentially will add, um, um, you know, uh, new provisions to the, uh, to the, to chapter two fifty, dealing with towing, what the towing companies must provide, twenty-four seven service. They have to have a, uh, a gated location, you know, things like that. Uh, there will be, you know, set fees with regard to it. There's definitions of heavy tow versus, uh, versus just, just a regular tow. But, uh, we have a number of towing companies in the village. The chief can go into more of that. This will provide for registering of the tow companies as well as the tow operators. Uh, which is in a, a, a rough analogy to what we now do with taxes. Uh, and, uh, and, and, and to provide that. I, I should just say, I did speak with, uh, a village clerk, Donnelly, uh, who would have no problem with running the, uh, you know, the application process or the license, you know, the permitting process through the clerk's office because she similarly does that with the taxes, with the assistance of the police. Uh, chief, any, uh, you know, your assistance in terms of, you know, helping explain some of this stuff will be, is, is obviously appreciated.
Sure. The, um, the code that was in place didn't have many regulations, um, by way of tradition. By way of tradition, the village is allowed for companies that towed in the village to tow on the rotational list. We manage that according to the code and probably better than what the code actually required. This will require certain standards for tow companies that were never required by legislation, like having a secure lot. It'll license drivers so that things like a couple of years ago, a local tow company had an employee take one of their tow trucks on a high speed chase through Connecticut. That person was impounding vehicles on behalf of the village and we had no mechanism to remove them from being a tow agent for us. So we had to have a conversation with that business owner who obviously was understanding. And in exchange, it's my understanding the tow companies will expect something of. A discussion about rates because their rates have not been increased in twenty five years. So the rates that they're impounding vehicles at right now, they're taking a loss on most of that. So what this legislation represents is a standardization of practices that we've always done. And bring things up to speed for twenty twenty one.
It's important that what we're developing, what we already have is essentially a rotational tow list. And the 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 tow companies, you know, if they are the next up on the list. You know, it's their job to basically do that. They can't farm that job out. And not essentially taking the job could be a ground for suspension or ultimately revocation of their. Permit to do the towing business within the village. I should point out it is doing the towing business within the village. If someone is bringing a tow from outside into the village. This local law does not apply because this we're dealing with the companies within the village. Am I correct on that?
This is only towing on behalf of or at the request of the village.
Right, correct.
Still tow in the village as a private company. We're not regulating private.
Right. You know, we're dealing with, you know, if cars have been improperly parked, if we've got, if we have to impound a vehicle. You know, various things like that will allow, you know, to contact these particular tow companies. And 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 essentially, you know, do what they do. I mentioned earlier about heavy toes. Because there are occasions where for certain reasons. If a truck, if a car goes into a ditch, there may be an added fee. So that's one of the things the chief is talking about in terms of. Of of sort of revising the village's fee schedule with regard, you know, to those toes. But this would, we think, oh, you know, a substantial way in terms of regulating. The business which to this point has not, you know, been nearly as regulated as it has been. And as I said, based in large part upon what we have in peak scale or what peak scale has, it has insurance requirements. Requires hold harmless agreements, you know, and, you know, and and other things. It talks about how the vehicles can be released. And so it's basically, you know, rewrites or I shouldn't say rewrites adds to the code, which is has otherwise not been in the code before.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I I do have just one question, Stuart. No, thank you. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Stuart, for this. It's not one question. This is not regards to this particular law, but is related in a way, I guess. And I cannot remember the law and forgive me, Stuart, but. There was a proposal, I want to say about four years ago in regards to towing and ticketing. The lieutenant Damianno brought into.
It's in here.
Is part of this, correct?
Part of this.
That's what I wanted to do. Yeah, I was reading that. So I wanted to make sure that that was incorporated in here.
It's at the latter part, you know, I actually communicated with the lieutenant Damianno who was very happy to hear that it would be in there, but it is in here in terms.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to go check. And now as I was reading, I just wanted to make sure that that's the case. So yeah, I'm I'm in favor of moving this forward. I guess, chief, on this one, how many how many tow companies do we tend to have working, doing this kind of job here and for the village and behalf of the village?
There are four on our list right now. There are. There are five companies that are operating in the village on behalf of the village. There are other tow companies that may want to do this. And have not had an opportunity and the code had never provided for a process for that. So now this will allow for a process for anybody that wants to apply. Likewise, it'll give us a way to throw people off when there's problems. There was a complaint that spurred this conversation, so. This will give us an ability to be able to deal with those.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I I do have, thank you for doing this, chief, and also Stuart Cahan. I had asked for this to be put on the calendar actually. A while back and the chief and I had conversations about exactly what he just stated, which, you know, it's time to to revisit. Thank you for revisiting and codifying things. So a couple of questions. Number one, we're in here because this is pretty long. I tried to read through it. What happens if there is no towing company that is willing or able to? For example, one thing the chief brought to my attention is not everybody has a fenced in area. So we've codified what you need for the towing companies. What I'm not seeing is what happens if perchance, one of two things happens. We don't have any towing companies that have fenced in areas. What happens if we can't find towing companies that can meet all these good requirements which we want? And what happens if we do, but it's only two of them and they would then require pretty high prices? Like, I'm trying to understand how we implement this if that scenario happens. And I think it's it's likely actually to happen. It's fair to say, as the chief said, that they haven't raised their prices in twenty five years. But they might request prices that are unaffordable. What do we do with that? Has that been thought thought about? Am I missing it because it's in here and I just didn't read the right line here?
Through the code, that's through the fee schedule, so we don't deal with that. That's a board decision. And if tow companies can't meet minimum standards. And when I say industry standard, it's minimum standards. These aren't things that are unreasonable. If they can't meet them, then they probably shouldn't be impounding cars on behalf of the village if they can't secure them when they get them back. So if the board doesn't want to do that, that's your prerogative. It's code. I'm simply making recommendations. So I I can't tell you what to do if the companies don't want to comply.
No, not that. Not if they don't want to comply. They want to comply, but they may not have a fenced in area which we require. They may just not have it. Not saying they don't want to have it. They may not. And what if we can't find tow companies? Have we thought about that? That meet the requirements? I'm not saying. You know, and we can ask for certain fees and they may say, well, that's very nice, but I'm not willing.
My job on the possession of cars is to ensure that they're safe while they're in the custody of the village or a vendor that we have. If our vendors tell us that they can't safely lock vehicles in, then we're going to have to find a plan B.
Okay.
I don't, I, the board can do what the board wants to do. My recommendation is that we only use companies that meet minimum industry standards. And if you're going to impound a vehicle, it should be in a secure facility.
Got it. But in this code, and I think then therefore I was trying this to Stuart, Stuart, what if we? Do we come back and change a code to contiguous communities? I mean, we have to find somebody in Austin. So either I'm the only one that is worried that we won't find. Company out of the four or five that exist that will meet all these requirements. So I may be the the only one that thinks that. Because nowhere does it say what happens. And we've had situations when we choose boards actually. And find that there are not enough people and we've made it contiguous. I don't think that's convenient for people that live in this village to have to go get their cars. Far away from where they live on one hand. Do we need to worry about it now, Stuart? Should there be?
No, I think, no, mayor, actually, I think. I think it is something to that has to be looked at because. I'd rather not have to keep, you know, say to you, you know, in six months, we've passed this, but oh, we don't have anybody who has a secure facility. So now what are we supposed to do? So I think. You know. There, you know, there are, you know, as the chief has told me, there are different ways that some people, you know, secure the facilities, you know. Park a lot of cars in front of certain places. You put cars up on lifts. You do different things like that. I think though, again, as I said, this came, you know, off off of the peak scale. Obviously, the best way is to have a have a gated facility.
Right.
That way, you know, the only people who can go in are the people who, you know, basically that that's their location. They can open it up. They can let people in to get it. I think we do. I think though it is important to 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 sort of understand that. That particular requirement may be very difficult for a number of the people who currently tow in the village. And so the question then is. Do we want to essentially make it that they would not be on our rotational list because they don't do it? Or do we want to try to find some way that we can work around it? I mean, one possibility, mayor, is to actually hear from the tow companies and say, listen, if we have this here. You know, can you meet this? And if they say they can't, but they they have, as the chief said, maybe they have a plan B as to how how they maintain the vehicles.
Okay, so you want us to vote on this next week, pass it, but it doesn't sound like the.
No, 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 no. My apologies. No, I what I what I don't want you to do is, what I think might be wise is. I don't have a problem. I mean, my thought would be to have a to put it up for a public hearing. And perhaps have the tow operators come to the hearing. Or if that's not the case, have have the tow operators come to a future work session. Before before we actually put this on for a public hearing and say, oh, this is actually, you know, I'm reading this, this is doable. You know, I can I can secure a facility this way. Because, you know, I don't want to keep coming back with corrective legislation. It doesn't make any sense. But I think that it would be good to know if the companies that operate now in Austin. Can essentially meet the demands that are here that are here. Because I don't think it's, you know, I don't think the board is interested in putting people out of business. But at the same point, how do we secure those? I think I think perhaps, you know, you know, reaching out sort of like what we did with the. The the leaf path, the leaf blows, you know, to see what what these particular businesses, you know, are able to do. And, you know, how would they secure? How would they secure it? And then I'm happy if the board is okay with that to, you know, revise the language that is in this proposed local law. That maybe we can have different means of securing the location. Because they think some languages to how we secure it has to be there, but exactly how it's done. I'm certainly open to suggestions from the other businesses.
I have I have was one obvious question. And chief, maybe you could help me with the answer. How many are present of the five companies? Cannot meet the standards that you know of, or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question because it's just been a while since we've revisited. So now we're visiting it. That was a concern. Because the chief and I did speak about this and it's not clear that they are able to. So I don't want to go back and forth on this. The other piece on this helped me out. The 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 issues that were raised to me both as a trustee and then as mayor is that the the people don't understand how the towing works. Now, I lived in New York City long enough to know that they have lots of information. I still couldn't figure out what happened when a car was towed. So and where to pick it up and all that, but the signage, I don't see it codified. I don't know if it has to be. But signage that needs to be out there to tell people like how towing works, where they call. You know, what's the process? I don't think any information on towing, I may be wrong, at least I couldn't find it, is on our website. People who have their cars towed, so I don't know if it needs to be in a piece of legislation. Stuart, you could say to me, that's not a legislative issue. You don't need to pass that. You could just say as a matter of policy. This needs to be on the website. We have to tell people when we come up with the fees, what the fees are, how to get information. To get to pick it up twenty four hours a day. And I did get a request more than one. I got about three. Not that that's a huge number, but still three community members did contact me to say that when we put information, they'd like it to be both in Spanish and English. And what do people like samples of what people are supposed to get? So when their car gets towed, what should they be looking at? How do they know when things cost? Like, what are they supposed to pay? Who are they supposed to pay it to? And if they have a complaint, where do they go? And if if it's limited by time, again, I throw this at you and I'm throwing it also at the chief. Because you may say that's not really legislative issue. That's a communication issue that needs to be done. As a next step, but I do wanted to go on the record saying those are the concerns that have been raised with me. Not giving all the solutions, but if somebody can help us with appropriate solutions. Those are some that I've named that have been brought to my attention that I think would be helpful to residents.
That's fine. I mean, that can absolutely be put, you know, on on the website in terms of, you know, if you have been towed, you know, this, you know. The if if you're towed, you would you, the person, for example, would have to get a release form. Because that's what gets produced to the tow company to indicate where, you know, you know, where it is. And, you know, just going back to, you know, gated locations, obviously, one of the things that's important is to have the location. Essentially within the village because you don't want to have someone whose car is towed having to, you know, go, you know.
To Big Sko.
Brewster or whatever, or Bayside, or whatever. Mayor, you did ask about towing charges. The code, the the proposed local law has both towing charges, we list both towing charges and storage charges.
Right.
And the maximum basic charge for towing of a disabled motor vehicle at the direction of the village would be two hundred dollars. The maximum additional charge for recovering a disabled motor vehicle. From a ditch, field, river, pond, lake, creek, snow or mud or gravel, again, at the direction of the village. Would be seventy five dollars per hour or part thereof. Those two, those two air, what I just quoted, would not apply to vehicles exceeding ten thousand pounds gross weight. And it also would not apply if there is proof that the store, that the impounded vehicle had been stolen. And the individual can produce information that they have in fact reported the stolen vehicle to a police agency. Because we felt that wouldn't be right to essentially get that person charged. With regard to storage. The storage fee that we propose here would be fifty five dollars for each twenty four hours. Following the first twenty four hours. So essentially the first day for the first twenty four hours, there would not be a storage charge. But it would begin at fifty five dollars for twenty four hours beginning after that. And again, storage charges would not be imposed if the vehicle was stolen and that and the stolen vehicle was reported to a police agency.
And those recommended fees were researched with like contiguous communities to make sure it's reasonable. Somebody looked at that?
Yes. And I know this is what peak skill has. These are, these are, these are definitely, these are their fees. That they that they that they have in their code. I will double check to see.
Those are less than what peak skill charges. We're still under everybody else. Our tow trucks are wildly underpaid. And even whatever the government rate is, is typically far less than what they get in a private tow.
Right, but but the ones you guys are recommending.
Have around and what I'm telling you is that it's less than what other communities charge.
Good. That's that's a good thing. I just wanted to.
And I would not, I I would expect the tow truck drivers will come in and probably ask for more. Because like I said, they're taking a loss on most of what they do on behalf of the village.
Okay.
So if I may.
Yes, sir.
Going back to, I get my car towed and I'm in a parking lot somewhere. First thought to my mind is I'm not going to look for the village website. There should be some type of signage, at least with some sort of direction. Pointing you to a number or something. Because let's face facts, they're not going to go on a website and look to go where to get their car. But I believe the information should be on there, absolutely. But your first knee jerk reaction is where's my car? And then you see a sign, oh, I got towed. Oh, I gotta call this number. So I don't know, I don't even know if we even have any signage in the village, you know, I. I'm not saying that we need plaster signs all over the place, but if there's parking lots. Or correcting wrong, if it's a village lot. Is there an ordinance in place for village lots or village property? That a ticket or a tow could be written on?
There's almost no cars towed from village lot. They're towed from streets because of either snow emergency or impound. So there's no possible way that we could accomplish that through signage. We'd have to have a sign on every street in front of every house that would say that. Like in a private lot that says if your car has been towed. Also, it would say if your car has been towed, call the police because we're not going to tell you which lot it's at because it's been impounded. So every, the the vast majority of cars that are towed, we tell people to their face. Come back to the police station with a licensed driver or someone with a valid license or with a license plate so the car is registered. Or upon release from arrest, we give you your release form and then you have to go find a licensed driver to go get it. That's how the majority of them go. The rare occasion where we tow a car that someone doesn't know. Is typically because of snow emergency and in that point, we're usually all over everybody already telling them we're towing cars because of snow emergency.
Okay, understood. So. What would deem a car being towed from a village lot?
Almost never.
My point exactly. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mayor, what I would suggest, if it's okay with the board, is that the proposed local law, you know. Perhaps with the chief's assistance, I can send it to the tow companies. And perhaps maybe we could have them here on the at the fourteenth work session in April. They could, or if you want to do it even later, it's whatever. They could, or if you want to do it even later, it's whatever is the board's, you know, what our schedule is. And then based upon that, we can, you know, we can always schedule a public hearing, but at least to hear from them first, I think would be beneficial.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, you know, send it to them, let them mull it over. Maybe they'll talk to each other. Maybe they'll talk to the chief. Maybe they'll talk to you or the village manager. Let them mull it over. So they have some prep time that they're not just showing up, you know, all these folks, you know, they work, you know, taking time out or. You know, let's make it as easy as possible and let's make it as informative to residents. It's not a great feeling to come out at 1:00 in the morning. And find out your car. I mean, I think people's initial reactions that their car stolen, actually. Not even realizing that they were towed. So the police is the place that's open 24 hours a day. The only thing I would add, and this is a minor detail, Stuart. You said the 24 hour thing. My only issue is if the tow companies are not available on a July 4th on a holiday. It might be something you just have to consider because if they're not available, it's not fair to charge somebody. If they are open and that's one of the requirements, of course, then that's fair game.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
You know, we're talking about signage in regards to towing and stuff like that. And I guess my question would be to Matty because I know we're doing the parking study for the downtown portion.
Right.
And at some point in time, we are going to be having this. Unit meters in a way or however we want to do it. Is that an opportunity that we could have? If that will be the case, at some point appropriate for us to put a sign somewhere. Or part of the, or part of the unit itself, if if a car, because most likely, some of the cars. And please chief, correct me if I'm wrong, some of the cars in situations like this is an emergency road. So mainly is in the downtown area where we're doing the snow cleaning. Parts of, you know, Spring Street, Broad Avenue, State Street, maybe Main Street, definitely. So maybe having a signage around that area, it will help. Something like this along the lines. But again, that's something that maybe Matty already thought about it. That was something that that I just, I was thinking about, you know, since we're doing this parking study. Maybe that could be part of that incorporation or when the, hopefully with. The parking meter units will will, maybe we can incorporate something along those lines there. So but that's not part of this. I'm just saying. As a signage, as a concern, as a trustee, for you had at some point of having some sort of signage.
We have signs that say snow emergency. We send Facebooks, Twitters, Nixls, radio messages, newspaper messages, television messages. We then run your license plate and call you at home and tell you we're about to tow your car. I don't think there's anything else we can do to tell people they're towing the car. I I I heard the mayor say that there where someone would come out at 1:00 AM, there is almost never a scenario where somebody comes out at 1:00 AM and finds that their car has been towed. We're not a private towing service. What we're talking about here is impounded vehicles, a traffic stop, an arrest, where somebody's car has been impounded. Rare occasion, once or twice a year, we call snow emergency, we may tow a few cars, snow removal a few days later. We've already spent five days telling you we're about to tow your car. If you don't know, then there's no sign in the world that's going to change that. And to that end, we've had trustees who have argued that there are no such thing as snow emergency signs when they've been posted in front of their home. So the bottom line is you can post all the signs you want. People don't read them and they don't change anything. So I don't think there's another sign that's going to make this.
I don't, chief, I don't disagree with you, but also there's another group of the community that don't have Twitter, don't have Facebook, don't don't get Nixle text, you know, so to me.
We knock on their door. We run their license plate and we knock on their door physically. If they don't have doors, we'll get a megaphone. I mean, we literally do that. We get on the PA system. There is not another, there is not, there are very few things in this world where you can say, I've done everything I can. We have done more than everything we can to notify people during a snow emergency that we are towing their car. When I say above and beyond. It's unreasonable, the effort that we put into telling people that we're about to tow your car. When you get towed in Austin, you deserved it on a snow emergency. There's nothing else we can do to let people know it's coming.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, by the way, I was laughing because if you didn't say that, chief, I was. Manny, you remember, like John Godman said, there is no sign in my block and it's literally in front of his house. He's right. I mean, people just don't see the signs. They're used to it. They don't, they pass by it a million times. It's not effective because of that. But we'll we'll have to think of the communication side because we we have gone requests. I assume people will be entitled to receipts. We've gone issues where people said they didn't get. That could have been private. I don't know. But the communication, if it does need to be in legislation, we will discuss it as phase two. I'm going to leave it right in Matty's lap to. And Jamie is our communicator, but this is, as Manny said, also part of the mobility. So you're saying, at the end of all this, Stuart, let us send it to the tow companies. I heard the chief say there might be some companies who aren't on our list, though, who may be interested. I'm hoping maybe you'll send it to them as well. And then you you want to bring them in and say, let's hear it. We've done this before with others. Your date sounds fine to me. The village manager may have other things, but I feel like that date is appropriate. Weather is getting nicer, you know, people are out a little bit more. This would be the time to get people used to learning about this so that we're ready for the winter. So. Next year. Great, great. Thank you.
Are you taking, are you taking anything out of the Q and A? Because there is one question in the Q and A.
I am, but it's a work session. There is no question and answer. It happens to be a Zoom thing. So Johnny Drama asks, can the village create a secure lot and charge fees? That's totally not what we're discussing. And this is not a public meeting, so I didn't know what to do with that. Because it's not in our agenda to discuss tonight. We can think about discussing that topic at a later date. We have. An agenda that we are here to discuss today. So Johnny, you could, I can, I've taken note, I saw it earlier and I can. Bring it up with the village manager and have a conversation and with the chief about how we manage our lots. So I appreciate the the question. Village manager.
So. Next up, we have, we'll be discussing. Local law three, 2021, which is regarding sidewalk cafes. And that is a discussion with me and and Stuart. This did evolve from conversations that we had with local businesses, specifically restaurants that have have had cafe permits or have applied for cafe permits for this season. And as you all know, during COVID, when COVID hit, restaurants could not serve inside. And we. You know, went to great lengths to accommodate outdoor dining, which was really complicated because we also had to create. Sidewalk diversions because you couldn't just put tables and chairs outside. There had to be six feet allowable for people to walk by. This was something we did and and it worked for the restaurant, allowed them to operate. During the summer and this this really specifically hit restaurants on Main Street and Spring Street. Other restaurants in the community were able to accommodate outdoor dining because they had either parking lot space that they owned or in the case of, say, Tasty Table. They had a wide enough sidewalks. It wasn't an issue. But for Main Street businesses, we created these very awkward sidewalk diversions with these ramps and and. At the time, that was sort of the best we could do. And and we've decided that in, you know, a year later, we're very aware that that is not an optimum. Solution. None of this is optimum. The pandemic is certainly not optimum. But we anticipate that even though restaurants are now at 75%. That there is challenges because people are not going to necessarily feel comfortable eating outside. They're still, you know, these are businesses have taken a hit and. The outdoor spaces, if we can improve them, also help in drawing people downtown who can then shop at other places on Main Street and Spring Street. So. We have purchased what's called Jersey barriers, which are are sturdy. In this case, they're. Plastic material that I believe can be filled with sand or water that then can be set around the parking spaces. And you can actually create the dining space in the parking space. So the. The beauty of this is the sidewalk remains clear, which we were finding it was an issue because of the ramps were not. Really, we weren't able to do ADA compliance. We did have a couple of people who had challenges with the ramp. So to, we maintain accessibility. Along the sidewalk and we also address an issue of of safety. As well as an issue that the restaurants had had brought to us of really be able to creating a more attractive space. So we had had a meeting with a group of the restaurant owners. And we talked about this and some other issues pertaining to business development and, you know, assisting. Businesses through the pandemic as best we can from our sort of limited vantage point. And they agreed that this would be something that they would like to pursue. So in doing this, we did a lot of research. We talked to other municipalities. We talked with Nelson Nygaard. And what we found is most municipalities in all of our sort of sister municipalities in Westchester. Had, that did similar things. Everybody. Basically waived all fees and everything during the height of the pandemic when the restaurants were actually closed for service. But now as they're rolling it out and there still is a need to accommodate a COVID. Compliant outdoor dining space. The issue of public parking spaces is a challenge because. Public parking spaces do represent a revenue source for the village. So there's two items here. One is the law that will allow us to do this. So. We want to be able to do this for the rest of the season that would take us through October 21. So even in the event that. The emergency is lifted, that we would still be able to operate these because, you know, there's a little bit of investment for the village and the restaurants to set these up. But we also. Want to be able to. Have some fee associated with the parking space itself. So the the fee is a really a separate from the law itself, but we're asking to ask, one is for the board to consider the local law, which Stuart can go over in more detail. But we're also asking for tonight a discussion on the fee and we had given some parameters. That, you know, we got from other communities on setting those fees and that would be per space per month. For the restaurant owners and that would really make sure that the village was trying to do something fair and good, but also. We would not be putting ourselves in position where we were being given gifts of public funds to discreet business owners. So the reason I'm bringing this up separately is why we'd probably open the public hearing for a local law on the 7th and then. Have the public hearing on the 21st. What we, a little bit of a concern here is that the restaurants are are. You know, we need to plan for this and we'd like to start it if at all possible in May. I have to get the definitive date when we're getting the barriers from Paul. So we want to, you know, in the interest of making sure that they can plan and and weigh in on, and I'm sure they, you may get comments on on fees. We wanted to see if we can have that, the fee determined separately and maybe in advance of that, if at all possible, so that. Everybody has time to decide what they're going to do. We would not be offering. Again, this is specific to restaurants really on Main Street and Spring Street. I don't think there's any other restaurants that are. Affected and we would not be offering a choice of. You know, if people wanted to keep things the way they are, we really don't recommend that we keep things the way they are. It's not the best solution and we can do better this year. And because the restaurants are open now, even at 75% and presumably, hopefully, those numbers will go up. That the reason to create, you know, the diversion is not as great. So. It really is sort of an all or nothing proposition that we're we're looking at here for the restaurants. Is there any questions or?
Karen, what are the fees? Do we have?
We had recommended, I'm sorry, we had recommended, so we had looked at this a couple of different ways. We we asked. A lot of the municipalities are actually going through this process now, setting the fees. I know in Dobbs Ferry, they they set a fee, I think the administration recommended $250. I think that has come down to. I'm not sure how far it's come down. I know that if they were looking at 175, it may have come down since then. I was waiting for an answer for them. Huntington, Long Island, set a fee at $100 per space. Typically, the the sort of the barometer that we use was, you know, when we did the events policy. If you were to say have the village fair and and you're taking up spaces to put kiosk and vendors or whatever fair stuff. In our new policy, the fee associated with a metered parking space or village parking space is. $10 per day. If you did that, that would be like $300 a month per space, which would be, I think, very cost prohibitive for a restaurant to to pay based on what they, you know, the return on investment. So we're recommending, you know, you could say, okay, well, you know, we'll give a discount of economy of scale. So. The the ballpark range that we're seeing seems to be between the 100, 150 mark. And that's really the guidance that we can provide the board and determine the fees. But based on where we, what we've seen, that seems to be. Where the fees, some some municipalities are doing it different ways. But to keep it in the spirit of what we're talking about, and Nelson Nygaard really confirmed this, doing it based on. Fee for each space per month that's somewhat based on the the revenue loss that you get because you're not collecting fees anymore.
Thank you, Karen. Can you talk a little bit about the parking implications of this?
The parking implications won't really change from what they are right now because these are basically spaces that are being used currently. Or have been being used last season. So we didn't. That was not a huge problem. One thing that we, and we talked to Nelson Nygaard about this, these are prime. Parking spaces because they tend to be right in front of places that people want to go to. But one thing that we know from our parking study is we don't really have a shortage of spaces downtown. We just have spaces that might be slightly a little farther away. People like to walk. So it really wasn't, we got no complaints from the other businesses last year. And and again, there is an advantage to the other businesses because what they're giving up in terms of immediate parking. They're making up for the fact that more people are coming down because they're coming to eat. So most of the businesses and and building owners were okay with this. So I don't anticipate that that will be an issue. We are capping this, but because parking could be an issue, we're capping this at no more than two spaces per. Business. So similar to what we did gratis last time where we would still cap it because of. You know, if somebody did decide they wanted to buy all the spaces on Main Street, that would be problematic.
Right, that makes sense. And my last question is around. One of the things that we saw last year was there are, you mentioned how Tasty Table is on a very wide street. There are other businesses. Let's say closer to Steve Street, that where some of the streets are quite narrow. You talk about what some of the. Considerations may be for businesses that are in particularly narrow streets.
So the, on the now, so right now, we're basing it, these are businesses that have requested sidewalk cafe permits. So right now, that I don't know of any businesses on State Street that have, but I, you know, the businesses that have requested the permits are on Spring Street, Main Street. And then I, you know, I can almost list them. It's taste, the the rest are sort of diffuse throughout the community. It's Tasty Cable. Brothers Fish and Chips, they have their own property. D D's Diner has their own property, you know, so. But we haven't, other than the the only, again, the restaurant that this applies to where they're really forced to use the. We were forced to use public parking spaces is Main and Spring. Were a restaurant to want to do this on. You know, another narrow street, they would probably have to. You know, we'd have to look at the situation, but we would probably try to accommodate something similar.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, so Karen, so were you asking here, it's pretty much, we're not talking about, just to clarify from my head. We're not asking for the fees at this point. We're just asking to pass the legislation to utilize the spaces in the Jersey barriers within the spaces around the parking area, correct?
We're asking for both. But we would like to actually get, you know, encourage the board to determine, make a, you know, determine or discuss a fee tonight so that. Again, ideally, we want to start this in May. And we want to make sure that as we set the fees, that the restaurants have time to incorporate that into their planning because. You know, even, you know, at $200 a month, the, you know, restaurants were operating on small margins and. They are also what what the the value of the Jersey barriers is, they allow. Within certain parameters and guidelines, the, you know, different restaurants can do different things. Some do very extravagant sort of. Wooden structures around them, some do less things. All of it has to be approved and everything has to be safe. We can't have things falling into the street. But within certain framework and and we were able to get some of that guidance from Dobbs Ferry that we've sort of modeled this on. The restaurants want to be able to plan. So they did. Um, the restaurants want to be able to plan. So they did ask, they have been asking for like, can you let us know what the fees are as soon as possible?
Thank you. Um, so I have a couple more questions in regards to this. The Jersey barriers we, that we purchased was because we had actually last year, we had asked. To be, to, to purchase these and we were going to be utilized in these, not just for this particular case, but for future events, future stuff is not really. We not buying these just for this particular purpose right now.
No, last year, yes, exactly.
So now with that said, to me. The fee portion I have trouble with. Um. And uh, it, it troubles me because we know. That a lot of these small businesses have suffered a lot. Uh, that, that was one of the biggest impacts. I mean. It has impacted everybody, but you know, the more, the, the small businesses in our communities, we've been trying to help them. To stabilize themselves into what they are. So even if it's a ten dollar per day, which is you cut it down for five dollars. So let's put five dollars a day. If it's a one day deal, it's not a big deal, sure. But now we're talking about a, a business that will have to. You said maximum of two spaces. So if I do my math correctly, if you do from May to October. Um, it's going to be about five thousand dollars roughly, probably less than five thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. What I'm recommend, what we're recommending is. That we set the fee, the fees that other communities are setting and the reason it's important to have a fee is because we do recognize that the businesses are hurting. But this is a small number of the number of businesses that we're able to address. So as you narrow that scope and the village gives. A, a public. Uh, basically, public funds is what you're giving because you're exchanging your lost revenue. Now you're basically granting that to individual restaurants. Because it's such as, you know, um, th- this is an issue for Tarrytown where the fee, like where they absorb. It was over eighty thousand.
That's fine. So let me, so let me ask you this.
But we're talking more like maybe two hundred dollars a month, so like a hundred dollars.
Okay, so two hundred dollars a month times that, whatever. So let me ask you this. So what is the revenue that we are losing right now on parking spaces?
On those spaces.
What is the daily rate on those spaces that, but I want to, I, you know, you, you. What we could get and what we actually get. So what is, what we actually get of those spaces right now?
On those spaces, which are the most highly used spaces based on Nelson Nygaard's, we actually have, unfortunately, we have this data. Uh, I think it was when we, when I spoke to uh, Michelle yesterday, it was a hundred and eighty five dollars. A month, uh, a month for those spaces.
So those, we get a hundred and eighty five dollars and that is solid data that we actually been collecting this, on this pandemic right now. I would love to see those numbers as well, please.
You, you can also, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. You can also sort of extrapolate it. So our, our rate right now is seventy five cents an hour. Um, so you multiply it by how many hours, you know, in a day that we monitor the meters times six days a week and that gives you about a hundred and eighty dollars a month. If in fact that space was full, full time. I understand what.
Where we are collecting.
That's where the number came. So those spaces tend to be the ones, those are the highest demand spaces in the village. With the exception, you know, so that's where, that's where those numbers come from.
So pretty much, so if the guys that, the parking officers that go down the street and collect the coins right now. That's what they're collecting right now is a hundred and eighty five dollars or close to two hundred dollars.
Or the spaces that are in highest demand that are full, uh, uh, like virtually a hundred percent of the time that they're being metered, that's about what they're collecting.
And those are pandemic numbers, correct?
Those are pandemic.
Thank you.
So again, to me, I, I, I wouldn't, because I want to help the business community that has been affected. I, and, and I don't mind what those fairies doing, you know, last year and, and I spoken to a, the mayor about this. I, I call myself to, and I spoke to the village assistant manager in Tarrytown. And they spent about sixty thousand dollars uh, from the budget to help their small community where they're closing streets. And they were in cooperation with the police, the fire department and everything else. So I'm not saying that that's what we're doing, but. They were helping the community and I don't know what they're doing now, but I'll be curious to see what Tarrytown is doing at this point as well, not just those.
Tarrytown was on the list that I, I gave you. So I think they're determining their fees. I think they were up to eighty thousand dollars. So Tarrytown actually is in the process of. So the, I had, had distributed with um, this recommendation, a survey, Tarrytown was in the survey. I think there were about ten communities in Westchester, ten or thirteen communities. So um, everything that we're doing, we can keep. Like, most of them are in the same position that we're in as they're setting their fees right now. All of the communities, even the ones that, that did things on their, you know, that the village did in the height of the pandemic, all of the um. Municipalities, um, and then Nelson Nygaard backed this up for Long Island too, for the reasons that we just said about gifts of public funds. Are, are looking to establish fees going forward. Um, so that's uniform. Um, there, you know, we can follow up with our, our other, the other communities, um, including Tarrytown to see where, where they're netting out on that.
Yeah, I, I, at this point, yeah, and I understand what you're saying. At this point, I would like to, at least my position is, um, you know, not to. Find a way to help our, our businesses, sure, because they, they've been struggling and I'm not sure how true this is, but I heard some. I cafe, I hope is not the case. Um, but one of them I think has claws, not. That far, which I hope is not the case. I haven't confirmed that, but that's.
We haven't heard anybody closing yet, no.
Um, but yeah, so Natalie's not in Main Street. I'm talking about one in Highland Ave. That's what I heard. Again, I need to confirm that. I don't know if that's the case or not. Uh, but you know, I don't want, I, I would hate businesses that will close. Uh, and then try to reopen and try to help our community and try to help themselves and help the people that are actually working in there. To, and I know, I know it's not, not a lot. I know that. I know it's not a lot. I know it's less than what all the communities are charging. I just, we don't want to do that. I mean, that's just my position.
I think we're all uh, decidedly on the same page and that's why uh, we want to, you know. Um, the, the village is also, you know, granted the Jersey barriers will be, we can be reused for other purposes, but it is, we are waiving all the permit fees. For all the restaurants um, for this year too, and there is a considerable amount of work in the setup. Because all of the setup of this has to be done by DPW. Um, it can't be done by the owners themselves, so. So it's a, you know, it's, it's something that board needs to decide what, what they think is, uh, you know, fair and reasonable and we're just providing guidance on that.
So when we, so when we were doing this gratis, there was no indoor dining. So now they're at seventy five percent.
Exactly.
I hear what you're saying, Manny, but they're at seventy five percent. This is seventy five percent is pretty good. Sometimes these guys don't even get seventy five percent. They're lucky to get fifty percent. So this is their call. To add the additional outside if they want to. And if they want to do this, then they should be charged. I understand helping them, but they're at seventy five percent now. We gave them, we gave this to them gratis last year because they couldn't have anybody inside. Now they're opening up the doors. So I, I respectfully disagree with not charging.
I, I don't mean to be uh, making an excuse, but I just got summoned by the, the Board of Education to, to now switch to that meeting. So. Um, we're going to, uh, Dale and.
Go ahead.
Dale and Paul and I are going there to talk about water taxation, but.
Good luck.
I leave you all to make a, a strong and wise decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Um, thank you. Good luck.
Okay.
Glad you're on the, I'm glad you're on the agenda and I'm glad they're getting to um, good stuff. So um, my point of view is that. There is an issue of public space being given and we've gone through this conversation. I agree with Bob that. Um, we helped exactly was that, so we paid for more barriers, which yes, we will be using for this and we'll be using for the things. Good fiscal decision. Uh, from my perspective, I would take the amount of money that we normally would be getting. Cause you are depriving other people from using those parking spaces that they are using to go to other stores. And you're balancing it for, it's a good thing to have people come down um, to enjoy food, et cetera. That also helps businesses. So I see the sides. I'd like to find some common ground because I think what's happening is not a disagreement in principle about any of this. But more of a disagreement about the actual amount of money that we should charge where one person might say, I'd rather maybe not charge anything. To another person saying, I think this is the right amount and somewhere we should find a common ground because otherwise we will be speaking about ten to twenty to thirty dollars. For hours about this. So I, I don't mean to move us along, but I sort of am moving us along. Cause that I think is what we're coming down to, because I'm not hearing any argument about the number of spaces and the ID and what we're using, et cetera, et cetera. Nor did I hear that the businesses for the majority, I'm not saying every one of them. I also want to impress and Manny and I spoke about this earlier, that without a lot of fanfare, without a lot of, you know. Attaboys on everybody's back, the village, and I will not take any credit for this because I wasn't even aware of it till I go downtown. Has very nicely added many benches for the public. Many of the folks that go to the delis, many of the folks that go to takeouts for coffee, for bagels, for whatever food. Um, now have many more park benches um, all over uh, the market square area. I noticed one by. What I famously call the Christmas tree that's over there. I didn't even notice that until this weekend. So there has been more space created for all the takeout foods and eating and socializing that are socially spaced. And to Bob's point, a lot was done where nobody can go inside. Those are going to remain, even now that people can go inside. So I appreciate the work that was done. From my perspective, Maddie, if it's a hundred and eighty five bucks. I, I personally, and I understand where, where Manny's going with this. I personally think the public, that it's their space being used, we're helping private industry and we've had these conversations about lots of different issues. About how one uses tax dollars and how one uses it and we can talk about all night. I would like to take whatever amount that is. And make that available for those businesses that wish um, to participate in this. At a hundred and eighty five bucks, if that's the number, if it's a hundred and seventy five, that's okay with me. Um, Manny may disagree, Bob may want the full amount. I'm trying to find a common ground. That the three, three, at least three of us can agree to and make that the amount that people would opt to. I believe Maddie, that South Highland is a problem because that is a really busy road at fifty five miles an hour speed limit. I think, I don't even know, I should know because I should probably not get tickets over there, but that's a really busy road. So I'm not hearing anybody. On that road, is that correct? There's nobody on high, south or north?
No, there were no businesses on that stretch that had expressed an interest. So they, they would have had to uh, have filed for their sidewalk cafe. Um, in, in last year or this year, um, and.
And what if they file next month? Would they qualify for this or in two months from now? Is this, do we have an end date to this?
So I mean, a- as Karen mentioned, I believe this program this year, we're, we're setting in stone between May and October. Um, so if somebody came in in late May who was on North or South Highland and say, hey, I'd, I'd like to get in on this program. Uh, we would certainly have to speak with uh, the police department and, and with DPW to see what arrangements could be made for them because as you mentioned, you know, that, that would not be. Uh, an ideal place to, to sit and, and grab.
Well, it's, I would say dangerous area, but I don't know. This is not like, I, I'm not an expert in this stuff. We've hired people. We have a staff to deal with it. I would be okay with, let's call it one seventy five. Um, and if we have to make adjustments, we can always make adjustment on fees. But I would say if that's what it costs now, one eighty five, ah, one seventy five. I, I, I'm not at an auction, but that would be my suggestion. Um, what does the rest of the board feel about it? Um, am I reading correctly and, and then let's, let's move on.
I would, I would say that whatever we charge, I understand we have to charge something, although can, we can't just give it away. Um, that it, that we not try and, and turn a profit, that we try to make. The money back from the parking that we lose, but that that's it, that we just try and break even. I don't think we should be trying to make any money off of folks.
Okay.
So my, my question, Maddie or Stuart, my question is, so this setup would be for them to set out. In the parking spaces and the sidewalks would stay open.
That's correct.
Understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
In front of their businesses.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Dana. We should at least break even.
Okay, I'm left with Mr. Lopez for input and then we can move on.
I agree with Dana. So anywhere between a low of one fifty to about one eighty. Uh, which is about uh, what uh, Maddie and Karen told us they'll be getting now for those prime spots, uh, anywhere in there, I think it's fine.
May I suggest one sixty five and see if we can get agreement on that?
So before.
Oh, sorry.
So my last attempt, I guess, to do something in here. So about this, i- if, it, it seems like the majority of the board wants to charge. Uh, between one fifty and one eighty five, sure, whatever that number becomes. And we're talking about six months, more or less, Maddie?
Exactly.
May through the end of October.
So what happens if, a, a way to help the businesses in a way, sure, and, and I get, we're not charging the fees for the sidewalk cafes. We waive in that portion of that. Um, what if? Again, a- and Bob, I, I totally understand and I agree with you a hundred percent. Now we, the numbers of the outdoor seating and the indoor seating are pretty much increasing. By, by the days and hopefully at some point will be a hundred percent, you know. But in the meantime, what happens if? Can we, can the board agree on a month that we can? Work in, instead of charging it for, for the total of six months, can we charge them for three months, four months? Instead of the whole six months.
I, I just, the reality is, they were getting it for nothing. Once there's a fee for every month and they're at seventy five percent. I bet you, if, what's there, three applicants, Maddie, give or take?
Six.
Six. I would, I would, I would almost bet you've got that many applicants because we gave it to them. Now that we're putting a fee on it and they're at seventy five percent, I would bet that would cut down to half or if none. Looking for that sidewalk permit because of the fee, which is fine. I'm okay with that. But the rea- the reason you're getting this is because we gave it away and that's exactly why you're getting it. They're all jumping on there and. When they, when we put this in effect, I'd be surprised if we get one that accepts it.
So Stuart, help me and help Maddie. So right now, and I'm going to ask for this, I'm going to call this particular business. Because we had, this is one of the first ones in a way, uh, that had asked for a sidewalk cafe, which the restaurant which right now is Ahi Limo. Uh, they do have, they, they always had an outdoor seating. So if they were to keep that outdoor seating because it's very small and very limited. Uh, within the sidewalk, can they still do that?
Um, it was my understanding that Karen and Stuart uh, discussed that it had to sort of be all or nothing.
Yes.
In, in this plan, so, so sidewalk uh, seating would no longer be possible.
Okay.
We're not going to allow, for example, on Main Street, one business to have the sidewalk and another to have. Uh, in the, in the, in the, what do we call a parklet? Uh, the answer is, they're all gonna, it's all gonna be, you know, with the, with the Jersey barriers. So there will be free access, open access on the sidewalks.
So that to me is a big difference. Sure. So it's not the same thing as, as Bob was talking about. That if they don't want to choose, they, they don't have to choose. So because there's no option now. It's either you do it or you don't do it until.
On, 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 on Main Street, that's absolutely.
Main Street, yes, correct.
On Main Street, absolutely the case.
Yeah, but that's the only businesses, yeah, but that's the only businesses that, that I have always have a sidewalk cafe. I, you know, because everybody else usually don't have anything like that. Um, even, you know, anyway. But that's, that's my point to me right now, Bob.
Oh, I know, and I get that. And here's the, the last thing I'm going to say about it. Um, I promise. Um. This is all because of the pandemic. Pandemic, it's stopped in two months. Well, I mean, we know that's not the case, but this is. So once the pandemic and we get back to quote unquote normal, I'm presuming. That now they could go back to sidewalk cafes and we're not blocking off parking spaces, correct? Has that been thought of?
It, it has been actually, trustee Fritsch, uh, although it's not in the proposed local law in front of you, I intend to put in a sunset provision. So basically, as of right now, it would be, it would effectively sunset at the end of October of twenty twenty one. If the, if, if in fact we are still in some sort of issue where we have to. Continue it into twenty twenty two, the board can readopt. But right now, this would end, so. Effectively in twenty twenty two, assuming we're all back to where we were pre-pandemic, you just need to your regular sidewalk cafes.
Right, understood. So you, but that sunset is, we can move that, correct? So if it, so you're setting it for a target of October, which I understand that.
Right.
So. Everything goes back to normal in August. We can, we can, we can adjust that then, right?
If you wanted to adjust it at that point, you could. I mean, you know, but this, a- as of right now, the plan would be to have it sunset at the end of October of, of, of this year. That's correct.
Understood.
Okay, I, I, I'd like to move the meeting along because we are now discussing um, dollars and cents versus the principle. We've all agreed on the principle. I'm going to put an amount out based on what I'm hearing because I, I just have to, to move this along. I'm going to offer up back to what I said, which is one sixty five. People can choose to participate or not. Uh, we can put the sunset in and we can um, also. change it at some point if the rules change, a pandemic, the whatever. And uh, based on the recommendation, um, I'm in support of it. Um, I'd like to know if we have three people. So because I think this needs to move forward, right? What you're asking us tonight to do, Stuart, is to bring this up next week in legislation. Is that right?
What I'd like to do, Mayor, because we are looking at a, hopefully a May first start date
Right.
is next week, I know we have the special meeting with the public hearing. What I'd like to is at next week's meeting, have a resolution to call for a public hearing. I would actually call for the public hearing on the, I know the fourteenth is a work session, but if we could do it then, then the board could approve the legislation on the twenty-first. I can get it to Albany and we're, we're good by, by May first. I'm sort of just thinking, thinking ahead. Uh, but uh, we're not at the point yet. No, there was, the board's not voting on anything tonight. I know, you know, we
I know.
Just have the fees, which we can also do as a, as a subsidiary resolution because we'll just change the fee schedule. But what I'd like to do is get this local legislation scheduled for a public hearing. Uh, and that public hearing would be at a date in April. So I'd like to theoretically get it passed in April, so I can get it up to Albany and approve before the first of May.
Right, so we can benefit from May. Okay.
I'm sorry, separate and apart um, from that, I think we had spoken about um, if at all possible, trying to adopt the um, fee schedule resolution um, on the seventh. If that would be possible, um, just in order to, to give the restaurants, you know, a month's notice of, of what they're going to need to put together in terms of funding this, this project.
For those that want to participate. Okay.
Right.
Can I just uh, ask, just say one quick thing and then we'll, we want, um, is it possible that we can um, estimate or get the numbers for what um, on average a parking space generates? Um, and just charge that? I mean,
They did. That's what they were talking
They gave you that.
That's what it says, one eighty-five.
One eighty-five a month is the average and those, those, those are spots that are continuously filled. They, they did that estimate. That's how they got it.
So we're only recouping whatever it is, it'd be less than one spot a month.
Well, you're talking about one eighty-five per month per spot, which would make us break even.
Okay, I got you.
Exactly what we'd be losing if, if the spot were full all ten hours of the day.
Right, but he's suggesting that you can do two spots. So you're only recouping fifty percent.
No, no, I stand, Maddie, Maddie corrected me.
Okay.
So I go for one sixty-six.
One sixty-six? What the hell? Okay.
Um, the price is great.
Now, I, I just, I think that the principle is all there for us. Okay.
Okay, we can do that. We can get that before the board. Uh, we, we, we got our schedule. We're good.
Right. Mr. Garrity, I think you have your hand up. It's, it's not a public session. It's a work session. So um, I actually just noticed it. I apologize. Um, assuming it has to do with this. Uh, we're going to put this through and then we're opening to a public meeting and you can uh, discuss it then uh, with questions, ideas or comments or write to the board. Um, we don't actually take questions. Uh, we do presentation stuff, but not really questions from um, attendees uh, during the work sessions. Where are we now? We're on to the next. Well, the village manager is not here. So Maddie, am I assuming that you are the one that is carrying us through?
Sure thing. Um, so next we have um, uh, Corporation Council is going to present the, the next three um, proposed local laws, uh, all of which are relatively similar. Um, all have to do with notices of um, when properties are before land use boards. Um, so providing proper notice to the community, um, that those applications or those properties are, are under review. Um, so I will hand it to Corporation Council, Kahan.
Thank you, Maddie. Uh, uh, hello again, folks. These are proposed local laws five, six and seven. Uh, and uh, uh, Mayor Levin and trustee Kazada, you may recall that these were previously presented back in twenty nineteen. Uh, what they are are basically to provide notice of land use board actions uh, relating to both zoning matters. So that would be planning and zoning matters under chapter two seventy. Uh, with regard to subdivisions, which is chapter two thirty-three, and with regard to uh, telecommunications, which I just forgot, which is chapter two forty-six. Uh, and effectively what this does is uh, following what many other municipalities in Westchester have, including the town, which is to put a sign on the property, announcing that this property is subject of a, of an application before be it the planning board, the zoning board, the uh, Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, and you know, when it's there, it is the applicant's responsibility to maintain the sign. Uh, one of the issues that was raised, and we discussed this before, was the size of the sign depending upon the type of the project. Uh, language has now been put in here that effectively depending on the size of the project, the planning director uh, will essentially make the determination as to what that size of the sign will be. The basic sign is something that will be attained, will be obtained through the planning department. So the person's not going to have to just get our basic sign. Uh, and it will be part of the application fee. But if there are larger signs, it will be the applicant's responsibility to get that larger sign, uh, which would then be placed upon the property and again, has to be maintained. Uh, depending upon the, the size of the property, uh, you may also need to have multiple signs. I think we have it in here every three hundred linear feet. There has to be a sign there. But this is to allow folks who might not see, might not look at the village's website and may not look in the newspaper where we have notices. Uh, if they're driving by, they'll say, oh, why is this before the zoning board? Or why is this application before the planning board? And they will be able to then, you know, find out that information. So it, it basically provides another means of, 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 of notice. Uh, proof that the sign has been put up has to be provided to the various land use boards so that they know that this was complied with. Uh, and uh, that's uh, that's essentially what the three are. I should point out that local law five of twenty twenty-one, since it does involve a change to the zoning code, would require that it go to the planning board for a recommendation to come back. Uh, uh, I, I would say the likelihood is that the planning board would have very little to say about this because it's not dealing with sort of their nuts and bolts stuff. It's really more a process issue. But our code does require that any change to the zoning code does require a referral to the planning board. The other two local laws, which deal with again subdivision and uh, and telecommunications would not require such a referral to the, to the, to the planning board. Uh, but again, these are another means of providing notice to the public about uh, actions that are pending before our land use boards. And uh, uh, if there are multiple applications, uh, in other words, if you're before the zoning board, then you're also before the planning board. You're not going to need multiple signs, but you're going to have to keep the sign up for the period of time that your application is pending before that board. Uh, until it's either withdrawn or there is a determination with regards to that application. And uh, that's what the three of these are.
Okay. Um, comments?
Sounds good.
Yeah, um, same here. Um, something that was asked for is um, Stuart Kahan has mentioned. For me, the most important part of this is um, land use issues for the average person, myself included, pretty complicated. Lot sizes, where they're located. It's like, you know, reading maps, you know, it's not so easy. Doesn't matter whether it's digital. It doesn't matter whether you see it. This is like a good old simple. If I live somewhere and I walk by a certain area that's all of a sudden is in front of planning or a house or business or whatever, um, and I pass by there every day, I'm going to see this sign and I'm going to sit there and say, and a lot of communities do this. It is really very usual. Is to say, okay, some work is being done or this person or this business is asking for work to be done. Now I might want to find out what exactly it is, not listen to rumors, not sort of try to guess what's happening there. So I think from a communication point of view, this is a simple, but very um, powerful um, communication uh, piece that I think is long overdue for me and I'm very much in support of this. I just, I read through the details of it, Stuart. I think you captured most of what people had said about it. Um, and the fact that the larger developments, um, you know, larger building and stuff require more signs, I think was discussed um, in twenty nineteen to great length. Because people have to see what's going on and uh, as soon as people see any work being done, they immediately want to know because it's a place they either drive by a lot, walk by a lot, or live next door to it. So um, I only had a question which I didn't see. Is there somewhere on this sign that if somebody has questions, where do they call?
Yep, the, the actual language on the sign is something that, you know, I'll discuss with, with the planning director, but
Okay.
we'll have, most likely what will be their mayor will be the number for the planning department.
So there needs to be a, a call to action on every piece of communication that we put out. That's the purpose of communication. So now that you've informed me, where do I call if I either have a question or a complaint or whatever? And um, so we have to have that information.
Right. It will be, it will be the planning department number so they can get either Jamie Kane or Jaime and be able to get it information.
Okay.
So Stuart, is this in place of or in addition to canvassing your neighbors with, by mail?
In addition, in addition to, in addition to.
Okay.
Thank you, Stuart. And you and I talked about this uh, several times through the pandemic and everything. So I do, I do appreciate you bringing this back. Uh, because I think it's essential. That was one of the things that we, we talked about in two thousand and nineteen and even prior to that, I have brought up to the board since two thousand seventeen, I believe as well. In any case, so this is the, the one that I have a trouble with. Uh, and big developments. Uh, we are leaving because we, we talked about the sizes of the site. So at some point of time, we were talking about for small residential is going to be like twenty-four by thirty or eighteen, whatever the case may be. For big developments, uh, one of the things that we talked about in last time, I even brought up the big sign that one of the IFCA properties has that the state is doing some renovations. That is, you know, I want to say it out, four feet by three feet sign. Um, so one of the things that, that I think is important, at least in two projects, uh, one BPW that we have, the RFQ send out, we ask the developer to have a big render because sometimes people don't, for big projects, they don't visualize. No matter what, what do you put in there and as a language, I think it has to be a sign of a rendering or what that looks like or what the potential project may look like on that site. We do the same thing for the um, project gone has some steps, has some crest. Whatever the case, this, this project is going to be named on the future on, on the State Street and Broad Avenue. We do the same thing there. Is there something in this package that I'm seeing in here? Because I don't, I don't see that unless I'm missing this. But is there something in here? And, and unless the board doesn't want to have a rendering and, you know, that will be as, as a majority of the board. If, if that's something that will support, I would like to see that as a part of signage in a big project. Because I'm, as a neighbor, I want to see what that building looks like. You know, I don't want to be able to go and wait, you know, to go to the website, talk to the people. I want to see what the potential may be. What, what the big building may be or what the medium sized building is going to be. And Bob, you seen this in New York City, they have a rendering of what the building is going to look like.
Yeah.
The setup is different over there, but yeah.
Right, but to seek on that, I think Omar, we spent three meetings, four meetings with DPW on a sign. So I think this on the bigger projects, I hear what you're saying, but on the bigger projects, we're going to be ahead of that. Require, we're, we require those signs for DPW and they put them together. So I, you know, I don't, if you want this in his legislation, I don't know. But on the bigger projects, we're ahead of that. So we're going to make sure that happens and hopefully boards after us make sure that happens.
Again, so I, I get that. So somewhere, somewhere in a planning department has to be a process. So as a part of the application for a big project, said, these are your requirements. You need to do this. So if it's not part of the legislation, that's fine. But to me, it has to be essential. There has to be somewhere. If that's what the board wants to see. So then we say something, then in five years from now, when another project comes along, they'd be able to go back and be like, this is what they've been doing every year from, you know, from five years back or whatever the time.
I understand that. But Omar, do you remember, was this a requirement or was this brought up on Wilder Bolter's part?
No, we, I asked for that. I was one of the people who asked for this rendering to be placed because if we just put a sign in there with some words on it, people don't know what the building looks like or may look like.
So I think that that's something to consider. A part of it is, and my, I think I, the experience of Bob and I had with the DPW sign, the rendering was one part, but they're, they're uh, having it available in Spanish as well was another one. And so um, that may or may not be something that we want to have as part of this, uh, having the uh, information in both English and Spanish. But those are the, some of the two biggest considerations. And then the more things that we, the more elements you add on, the busier the sign gets, the harder it gets to read. And so I, I recognize there's also a, a, a attention there in wanting to have clarity. You can only have so much on a sign, also putting information that's going to be helpful.
It could be, it could be, it could be just a freestanding sign with a rendering. It doesn't have to have anything. It's, it's just a future project. And then you have a sign that is determined by the director of planning, whatever sign may be next to it. It doesn't have to be, the two of them, those they have to be in the same, with part of the same, um, part of the same sign itself.
Yeah, that's all I see down in Manhattan. You see a rendering and future, future project with a, a tentative date on it. Uh, you know, and if it's, if it's a condo complex, it's like uh, rentals will be available starting such a, such a time. I, you know, I, DPW is great. I think it's too busy.
So again, but that was, that, that to me is, is something that we, that's a village-owned property. Sure. You know, for, for developers, a different story in a way because that's something that they have to go through. Maybe the zoning board, the planning board, maybe the architectural review board, the environment development board, you know, so it's, it's a whole process within itself. You know, we wanted to do, or at least I wanted to have the community to have engagement in that particular site. That's the reason why we put a lot of the additions, additions to that sign itself or to that rendering itself. But again, that's my recommendation. I would like to see that part as a part of implementation on the planning and building department end or somewhere within this law that it, that is a requirement for a big developer to have a rendering into the project. That's all.
Let me, let me just, uh, there is nothing in any of these three that deals with renderings. The purpose of these three is to provide notification of a land use board action that's pending. If in fact, uh, it's the sense of the board that on certain developments, a rendering should be provided. Uh, that can actually be made part of the planning board application process. Uh, doesn't have to be legislated here. Uh, it can actually be something that uh, you know, if a developer, let's just use Hudson Crest as an example, comes in with that kind of project. Uh, you, you know, it can say that for a particular type of project, let's say going over a certain size, whatever. Uh, you have to provide a rendering which can be, you know, visit, something like that. Uh, that doesn't necessarily provide notice that it's going to be before the land use board on X, Y, Z date, which is what, what, what this does. But if we want to make it as part of a uh, a planning board or zoning board process, primarily planning board, which is where this would come up. Because we're really talking either planning on a site plan, conditional use or potentially a subdivision. Uh, then part of that process could include within the application, you have to provide a rendering on a six foot by, by four foot, you know, some, whatever. Uh, and that's there. Uh, so that people coming around could say, well, this is what it looks like, you know, with this particular, this is what we're planning to put up, something like that. Uh, uh, so again, the local, the three local laws here, uh, and particularly telecommunications where the issue really would not come up in terms of what trustee Kazada has been talking about. Uh, it's not mentioned here in terms of rendering because I view this mostly as notice that there is something before a land use board. Uh, because I guess theoretically, someone could have a parcel of property, want to put something up there and could just put up a rendering or something like that. Uh, but this is more the notice. But if we want, if you wanted to go in that direction, uh, that could be a big part of the, the planning board application process.
Yeah, so, so yes, thank you, Stuart. And that's what I mentioned before. So to move forward, to move along with this application, because now it's nine forty. Uh, I'm in favor of all this because I, I, that's something that I have asked for, for years now. Um, so I would like to move forward and I would like to, Maddie, probably you can relate this message to Karen. I would like to work with uh, Jaime and um, Joe from the planning and building department in regards to the applications and revise these applications with the help of Stuart to move forward that portion of the language that I think is critical for our community to be aware of what that looks like or what a future projects may look like uh, going forward. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
And folks, what I would propose is rather than break these up into three separate things, that uh, on the seventh, I would have a resolution which would refer local law five to the planning board for their recommendation. to the planning board for their recommendation because it is a zoning change. Uh, we get that and and that would be okay because if we did it on the seventh, they have a meeting actually. Uh, I forget, whatever, whatever is the fourth, the fourth, uh, Tuesday of April, they can consider it then. Then when they, we get their recommendation back, a public hearing can be scheduled on all three local laws at the same time. Because they all essentially deal with the same thing, which is notification of land use actions.
It's, it's, Stuart, a quick question. I know maybe too short of a notice, but they don't have a work session tomorrow. I know they're going to be talking about a different topic, but do you think that's, it would be something appropriate for you to bring it up at that point or something?
I would, uh, the reason I wouldn't is I don't know if they've been busy reading the comprehensive plan over the past couple of days. So I think we should just sort of let him deal with that.
Okay.
Uh, but that, but that would, that would be my suggestion that we could get that, uh, you know, get that, get that to them. Uh, I mean theoretically, if they hold a work session before, you know, between April seventh and the next meeting, this could be discussed there as well. So. Uh, but, but that would be my thought and then we could get all three local laws, uh, considered by the board, public hearing by the board and then voted on by the board.
Okay, that covers our full agenda for this evening.
Great. We are adjourning, we are going into exec.
We have an executive motion to go into executive session for matters of personnel. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
With that, we conclude, uh, this evening's meetings. Um, thank you all. May I wish all of you who are celebrating, um, the Good Friday, Easter, Passover, which starts this weekend, uh, for those in our community who celebrate the, uh, holy holiday, um, in India, um, or at least in in most of southern India, um, enjoy that, a beautiful, uh, celebration. And this concludes our meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you all.